Or seawall that they maintain and manufacture than us. Okay, but with that said, that's not practical. Okay? If anybody needs, can be consultant, it would be us to another community, except we do have this shortage, and I think we have a need. And there is a incredibly complex chemistry when it comes to concrete, because it's a silica-based chemistry, and that's the second most complicated chemistry to organic chemistry. And if you're a Star Trek enthusiast, you can envision life forms based on that chemistry, because it polymerizes very similar to concrete. So I'm just going on and saying this is that this is a very complicated situation. And I believe strongly, I've done this before, you're just new to this.
I'm sorry I asked.
I think that we should go forward with a consultant.
Well, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval. Can't ask.
No. Okay, I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the award of the master agreement for engineering design services for alternative seawall materials. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion carries three to two. Okay, and you have, you know who said what? So we'll move on with the award amendment two for engineering services.
Marion Pace, procurement manager. This is an amendment number two for engineering services on the Boca Grande Drainage Project. Back in 2016, city council awarded a master agreement for this project specifically, which also allowed us to negotiate additional scopes of work or specific authorizations based on negotiated fees. This particular specific authorization is to conduct a SU, which is a subsurface underground engineering survey for utility locates to collect the data of all of our infrastructure out in that area, which will then be included in the overall design and would be a future specific authorization. Staff is recommending approval to award amendment two to Kinley Horn for not to exceed price of eighty-six thousand ninety-five dollars.
Questions for Marion?
Motion for approval?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the award of amendment two for engineering services.
Quick question?
Yes.
What fund is this being paid from, please?
Sales tax.
Yes, sales tax fund.
Yeah, thank you, and in the future, I know you're going to put the name of the fund down so we know, because we don't know the numbers. Yeah, thanks. There's been a motion and a second to approve the award of amendment two for engineering services. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next award of agreement.
Anne Heine, procurement for the record. Procurement received a request from utilities to issue an invitation to bid for a licensed and experienced contractor to remove existing forced main pipe at the wastewater treatment plant. Procurement received six bids and evaluated the responses. Agreement, we suggest agreement of the award to Boyd Irrigation of Fort Myers for the removal and installation of the forced main pipe. Boyd Irrigation will one hundred percent self-perform. The project will cost three-hundred-nineteen thousand seven-hundred-thirty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents as a lump sum for the project. The project will be completed within about four and a half months.
And the project code is for the?
This is for, out of the utilities fund, and this is a project code for the forced main particularly.
Okay. Questions? Okay, no questions, then how do you want to proceed with this?
I move to approve.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the award of agreement to Boyd Irrigation, Inc. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is an award of agreement for historic preservation.
Marion Pace, procurement manager for the record. Procurement solicited request for qualifications for an architectural firm to conduct historical preservation services on city facilities, which would include city hall, and we're going for a master agreement. So if we ever have to have anything done at UC Freeman or any other historical structures, we could do it in the future. So it'll be on a contractual basis, a five-year initial with, initial period with a five-year renewal. Within the scope of work in the solicitation, with specific authorization, number one, to conduct a historic evaluation study of historic city hall and the nineteen-seventy-eight edition, which we're in right now. Our partner, Midget Smith Architects of Fort Myers, were selected as a top-ranked firm out of the three offers during the evaluation process. During the negotiations for the scope of services and the fees, it was determined to split the scope of work into two services. One, the prime one, is the evaluation ADA study and remediation plan for city hall, which includes the review of the report with the state Historic Preservation Office for fifty thousand dollars. And that's for maintaining our historical designation, which coincidentally accounts for about thirty percent of that fee. To maintain that status. An optional service that we would like council to consider and provide direction on is to conduct a master space and security study of this facility for an additional sixteen thousand. Both of those fees are not to exceed, and they're billed based on the actual hours for each task. Now, that security study will assist us in doing, because we approved the design for the security for other facilities, that was not with ADG at the last council meeting. It did not include this building, because we needed to have someone with historic experience to be able to help us plan that security and make sure that whatever conduits or whatever we use is acceptable. So upon the completion of this initial scope of work, the city will direct the firm to start working on tasks to develop plans and specifications for bidding and remedial repairs. So this first specific authorization does not include the design and specifications. That would be in a future specific authorization. So first, staff is seeking council's direction to include the optional master planning services in the award of the agreement. So, and then, secondly, staff is recommending their appropriation of funds up to sixty-six thousand, which would include that option if you so choose, and award the master agreement a specific authorization with or without the optional services.
As we discussed in our one-on-ones, this is a historic building, and I know you've been waiting for, to get moving on repairs. So part of this evaluation will be exactly what the repairs are going to be needed, because we don't want to do any security improvements or ADA improvements and then have to take them out because of repairs. We've got to do the repairs first. So the question becomes, do we include in this also an analysis of historical evaluation? It is a historic building, we know that. And do we need to also include in this study or this report that we receive, that part of the piece of the puzzle? We know that whatever repairs we need to do, we can't get, can't get in the way of the integrity of keeping that historical flavor.
So I have a quick question. So is the city hall in the historic district of Port De Gorda?
Yes.
So we would want to maintain the integrity of the historic, the historic integrity of the Port De Gorda?
Of course we do.
What's the argument?
Yeah, you make a very good point, Gary. Other questions or comments?
Just say that, I mean, we need to support our identity, and this is, our history is our identity.
Yes, and this building is in dire need of some improvements.
Even mortar degradation in some of the bricking is.
Well, that we know, and we got to, we got to take care of that.
I know, I understand, I'm just, I'm just using it as an example of a number of the.
But there are a lot of other issues where there is water intrusion and things like that.
Exactly.
These account numbers that are here.
Okay, the account numbers.
What are those from?
That is from the general fund through facilities. They will be funding it, the appropriation.
Kristen Simeone, finance director. So we'd already appropriated forty thousand for this project out of the general fund, and we would need up to an additional twenty-six thousand if you decide to go ahead, and we would use it from the current reserves, operating reserves.
Okay.
That's why you have the reserve balance attached to your agenda.
And when you look at that, we only put the twenty-six, because we already had appropriated the forty thousand for this project.
And if we come up with a significant plan to improve the building, to work on the building as far as the historic update, you indicated that that could be local option, sales tax dollars?
Depending on what comes out of this, if it's a significant amount of dollars that we need, sure. It could be on the, it could be on the sales tax list for the, for the next go-around. It certainly qualifies as infrastructure. Most definitely.
Okay. Mitchell?
If I may add, Mitchell Austin again for the record. Because this is a historic building, listed on the National Register, there's also the possibility with this study in hand that we'll be able to apply for state grant funding for historic preservation. So there's, there's the option of getting monies in the future for that actual rehabilitation process. But that's all subject to funding at the state level.
Yes.
Not definite.
Possibility, but not for sure. Okay. Other questions?
So do you need a motion to approve it or a motion to appropriate the money?
Both, please.
Oh, both, okay. I move that we approve and appropriate.
Okay.
Does that include the optional services?
Yes.
Yes.
As, as offered.
Okay, there's been a motion. And there was a second to, to approve the award of the master agreement for the historic preservation and to appropriate the funds for the complete project. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to this, because I know it's very much needed. Okay, the last one on the list.
Anne Heine, procurement for the record. Procurement received a request for an amendment to a master agreement that was previously approved on March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen by city council. Was for engineering services of wastewater treatment works and improvement and services. The amendment has been prepared to evaluate wastewater facilities and recommend improvements necessary for reliable operations. The total not-to-exceed cost is two-hundred-eight thousand dollars, which is inclusive of all expenses to complete the task. The fund that, the funds will be coming from will be the utilities fund with the project code specifically for this. The award will be to CDM Smith of Fort Myers.
CDM is the firm that we hired to do all of the evaluation and designs for the expansion, future expansion of the plant. And expansion of plants are eligible, because they relate to growth for impact fees.
Okay.
Quick question?
Yes.
Just to be clear, you said that it is a not-to-exceed contract, but in the memorandum it says lump sum. Could you explain what the differences are?
There are some areas of the task that are lump sum, but there are areas that are not to exceed. The not-to-exceed areas will be billed based on hourly rates that were previously negotiated.
Okay.
Were these funds previously budgeted for the project, or is this something new?
Marion Pace for the record, I'd like to address council member Wine's question. The not-to-exceed, basically, it was kind of, it was changed as we were doing the amendment, because the last task was meetings. And if we do, if utilities does not require one of those meetings, we're not going to do it. So that's why we kind of stated it in the agreement or the amendment as a not-to-exceed. But it's lump sum prices that are negotiated for each task, but the not-to-exceed goes down to that, the meetings portion, the last task.
Okay.
And then, your question, ma'am? Was it budgeted?
I can answer that question. Kristen Simeone again from finance. This project is in the five-year plan and has been budgeted at a hundred thousand dollars per year for three years, and then goes up to a million dollars. So in this fiscal year, the utilities department is moving funds from an additional project where they saved some money to cover the extra cost.
So it was essentially budgeted?
Yes, it's been in our five-year plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion for approval?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second for approval of the award of amendment three. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we got through those. So let's move on to new business, the Gilchrist Bridge mural area fence request.
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. As mentioned under citizen comments, the Port De Gorda Historic Mural Society came to city staff with a concern regarding safety on the bridge embankment areas adjacent to the mural, and they proposed that we install fencing in that area to help suggest that people not climb up there, and also to eliminate some of the tripping hazard, particularly on the east end. There, the artist who is currently working on that mural, Skip, has prepared the two photographic images that you see of bollards that would be, that would have chains connected to limit access to those areas. City staff is looking for direction on this. Proposed cost, we're thinking is around five thousand dollars. Any of these improvements would need to go to FDOT for approval, and we need to know if you wanted to pursue it before we approach them with this potential project. So that's where we're going, to see if they will even allow us to do this, or they want something completely different, or they would prefer to see nothing at all. We don't know yet.
First of all, full disclosure, I am on the board of the mural society, okay? Taking that off the table. If we had not painted a mural there and people were still tripping, we would have still had to put something there, correct?
Definitely.
Okay, so this is not just a preserving the artwork kind of thing, okay?
No, the mural society just brought it to our attention. Now that the space is so much more reasonably attractive, a lot more people are paying attention to it, it's, it's been drawn to our attention that there's a.
My concern is it's very slick, and I see, I see problems in the future from that, but I'm glad, I'm glad to see that.
Ben?
Are we also going to have signage to accompany the bollards so that people are aware that they are not allowed on that mural?
We hadn't considered that at this point. It may be something that's necessary.
I just, I mean, I, I think we need to do this, but I don't know that it's going to be enough to keep people off of it. That's my concern.
Electrify them.
Well, it's interesting you mention that, because, you know, it's beautiful. And we took friends who were visiting on Easter Sunday in the afternoon. We took them down to the harbor walk to walk their dogs and, and show them the mural. And so lots of people were looking at the mural, and over on, if you can go to, switch to the other picture. Over on that, where the stones are, all these kids were up there playing on that. And so my question, and I've talked with numerous residents, wondering, with that little short bollard that sticks up at the little short one? If you can point to, that one right there, yeah. They were wondering if we can't have little short ones continue with the chain all the way across the mural, because it's kind of in keeping with the harbor kind of look, and it would really indicate to people that, you know, stay off of, stay off of this. But wondering also if we, how do you keep people from, coming from where the stones are onto the mural as well? And if we have to have something that kind of turns the corner a little bit to kind of indicate, stay away?
I think we need signage.
Do you really want those little bollards detracting from the actual mural?
It was a comment. It was a suggestion by residents. We have, we're taking all comments and considerations.
That's my comment on the comment. You mean like maybe up here?
Well, that was another one. Do we need to actually take the, some, some bollard up along the side of the mural by the stone, just to kind of show, turn the corner, just to show, stay away? I don't know.
As a challenging former ten-year-old, even these wouldn't keep me off of that. I'm just saying, so any, I'm just saying, is any kids that are just focused on having a good time, this is not going to stop them. But there's, there's the ninety-ten rule here. This is going to take care of ninety percent of the problem, and.
Or do we start?
I'd be surprised at the percentage of people walking on that that are not ten-year-olds.
Well, I said, I didn't say that I'd grown more than that. I mean, I would, I would do that with a grandson.
That is an adult population problem as well.
Well, okay, well, okay. Anyway, it's point made, so. But I do think that this, the way this is depicted is not only aesthetic, but also take care of ninety percent of the problem.
Kelly, do you want to comment on that, that, you know? As far as the.
Kelly Gaylord, come from the mural society. We actually think this will deter ninety-plus percent. You're always going to have people climbing up the concrete side. Actually, the other side is actually worse. This side is pretty steep. If you go back to the other one, the other one is more gradual, and we get a lot of people that climb up that side. There's actually people that come off of the green part above on their bicycles and come right down this side, and in the past, they've gone right on the concrete. We've actually seen them go right on the concrete, right to the, to the harbor walk. So this will deter them. As long as they stay on that other kind of gray side, that's fine. You're never going to keep everybody off, but it's, it's the idea that you shouldn't go on it. We've also found, to council member Matthew's point about signage, we currently have signs across the entire mural right now. And as recently as Saturday, I had a guy who was standing right next to the sign go, "Oh, can I hop up on this that says no jumping up on the wall?" Signs typically are good for a day or two, and then they just don't last. People don't read them, in my, our opinion. I think Mitchell probably has a better understanding of that as well. We've talked about that. We think this is a first, good deterrent. And it also gets rid of the necessity for the skateboard stoppers by having that chain go across, so the skateboarders can't go up. And I think it, anything that would go across the front of the mural would detract from it. All the way, the length of the entire mural would detract from it.
And just, just to point out, it was pointed out earlier that since the mural's been going up, the graffiti has gone down precipitously. That speaks well to the respect that anybody that wants to have a good time will have when they see a good piece of art. So that's why I think it's ninety-plus what we got, Kyle.
David, do you have a question?
I have a question to Mitchell. Mitchell, whose abutment is this?
It belongs to FDOT, it's their facility.
So why, why are we taking on a responsibility for minimizing the potential liability of DOT?
Well, the reason that we would be taking, well, FDOT does not recognize it as any potential liability issue. It hasn't been brought to their attention with a lawsuit or a trip and fall. At this point, I would imagine is the reason.
So my concern as the city attorney is that by, by putting up these bollards, we are recognizing the potential liability, okay? And knowing skateboarders the way they are, my daughter used to be one, they would see this as a challenge to go over the, the chain as they go down the slope. So we are creating, the way I see this, honestly, I see, see that we're creating a liability that we don't presently have, and possibly should encourage the DOT to recognize it as a liability and take whatever steps are necessary to preserve the state from being sued, as opposed to us opening the door to a lawsuit that we don't presently have to open.
Well, it's my understanding that if you agree as a council that we should pursue this, this goes to FDOT.
Well, FDOT is going to say, sure, go ahead, you know, spend your money, and maybe. Howard, I'm just, I, I'm concerned we're creating a liability that we don't presently have and recognize that there is a liability issue there that the state should be made to do something about.
I'd like to ask a question to David. So what you're saying is, is that if we were to take the initiative to put these bollards up, we would be potentially accepting liability if somebody gets hurt trying to circumvent these?
As a result, exactly.
And would be taking that responsibility away from FDOT?
Well, DOT would say, hey, you know, nobody, nobody's been hurt before. Now you've got somebody that's tripping over your chain as they're jumping over the, you know, the chain. And yes, you know, the responsibility on the negligence is going to be primarily on the skateboarder, but Florida is a comparative negligence state, so there will be a division of responsibility to whoever put that bollard up.
Morgan, Morgan.
So do we need to put up some skate stops along the, the concrete along there? I know we don't have any, and I know that Kelly said we probably don't need them now, but do we need to do something else? I don't, I see this as that we need to protect the mural. Period.
And we have a responsibility to protect the mural.
Thank you.
Well, if there's a way to protect the mural without creating an additional potential liability for injury, that's the way to go. And so.
I think this does it.
There was a fence there before, wasn't there, before they, no, before they did the, the Rena? Wasn't there like an aluminum? Oh, was that the other one? Okay, I was thinking it was there, okay.
Council, what's your pleasure?
Oh, jeez.
Initially, I'd like to approach FDOT and see if we could get them to see the light, so to speak, initially, and then come back, and I happen to agree, because there's risk in everything, including going down a street here, a one-way street here, because there's frequently people that go the other way. So I would say that our primary concern is to protect the mural, and I would say, since we have to approach FDOT to begin with, let's try to approach them with making a case to see if we can get them to buy into the liability upfront. And if not, then we revisit it and we'll probably say, okay, let's go ahead and take the. I think in that sense.
I agree with that, because I, I really can see people falling and hitting themselves and us getting blamed for it.
On this?
Yeah. I mean, just, I'm saying, that scenario, David's saying, I could see someone being crazy and trying to jump it or something crazy and like bam.
But you know, and I look at it differently. I look at it as people can do anything, anywhere. If that was the case, then we have, we need to go around our city and put, put rubber bumpers on everything.
Kill us.
No, no, but, but this.
I mean, seriously.
But we're creating, we're creating a hazard worse than the hazard that presently exists. And we're creating a hazard that we don't necessarily have to create.
Oh, I disagree.
Okay, well, that's, that's my job is to kind of, you know, identify.
But I disagree that it's worse than what already is there.
And it's our job to be able to say we don't agree, and we can.
Yeah, absolutely. I've said my piece.
You have, you've advised us on numerous things that, you know, sometimes we go, wow.
No, that's, you're absolutely correct.
I have a quick question. How many slip and falls do we have a year?
Oh, we have a lot.
We have a lot, okay. So people are going to do that anyway, and we survive. I'm going back to my original premises. I think we should try to make a case as we approach FDOT with the understanding, hopefully they're not listening to me right now, that if they don't see it, see it the way we'd like them to see it, that we bring it up and just complete, go where I think the census that we want to go right now.
Gary's not here today, I was going to see. Who do we need to talk to at FDOT, Zach?
We'll make some connections and see who we need to talk to.
Because we've got MPO next week, so we should. Can we postpone a decision on this until we talk to FDOT?
That's what I'm proposing.
We can certainly do that.
I'm just agreeing with Nancy. I think our primary concern is to protect the mural.
It is.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with any of what's been said. I just, you know, if we have to talk to FDOT, then let's do that first before we decide what we want to do.
Do you, do you like the design?
Yes.
Yeah. Can we find out what the exact cost would be to do that, just so we have it in our back pocket?
Yes, we will know.
All right, okay. And that's what I would suggest we do.
Great. Okay, moving on to the next. Okay, moving on to the next item. Executive Homes Construction Sign Request.
Yes, staff received a request from Executive Homes, um, building duplexes over on Carmelina Street to, um, put up a larger-than-usual sign for the four duplex units. We, um, council approved the same for Taylor Row, for all the duplexes that were over there, so you didn't have individual signs going along, so...
Was it like this?
No, it had a little more graphics on it. Taylor Row had a few more graphics on it. The contractor's here if you have any questions.
Yes.
You'll need to go, go to the podium, Rich.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Actually, it's still morning, good morning.
My general contractor and president of Executive Homes.
Okay.
What I'm requesting is to put a temporary sign the same as you approved for the one on Taylor Street, where it's down the street from there, the one that you approved for Perry Hoff's development. We want to keep just, uh, you know, until we're done with the project, which we have four units going in there. We want to get something up so people can see what we're doing. And we're trying to improve that whole area on the other side of forty-one. We've been building houses in there that I think we've upgraded the whole community.
Are you the one who built the homes along Allen Street?
All of them, and then Boca Grand, and it's what we're doing on the...
They're beautiful.
On Carmelina, thank you.
Questions? Maybe more of a editorial. I, I think this sign is way too complex for, um, an investment opportunity for signage. I think it needs to be much more succinct and say, Executive Homes has duplexes for sale, and call this number if you're interested in buying one. I don't think, I want to see all of that on a sign for a pre-sale. I, I just think that's way too busy, and it's, it's distracting to the average person driving by it. I, I would like to see something real simple if we're going to approve signage. I just...
And did you go by and look at the sign that, that you approved for Perry Hoff?
Do you have a copy of that? I haven't been down there recently, but I have seen it, yes.
It'd take me a few minutes to...
Can you pull it up? Because that was one of the comments that I had from residents, was how busy the sign was, and whether people, because of the amount of content on it, would, because when we, I read through it, it, they're going to be beautiful.
Yes, they are.
And you're really going to put a lot of really wonderful things in, in it. Would people actually be able to read all that as they're driving by?
I believe they would, yes. If they're interested, they'll stop and read it. That's what any advertising, uh, I can't read this thing, but you guys are out of this agenda.
You want to be us. How many hours do we spend preparing for this?
We're just, you know, yeah.
Okay. Well, what, this one has much, you know, more graphics on it, and that was one of the things that residents are wondering about making the, the one you're recommending have something on it, a, a picture that really captures the, the essence of what you're...
Actually, these were finished before he did the pictures on them, and now he's doing some right next door. So I don't have a picture of these. I, I can make sure that we do something, but I, I wanted to explain, you know...
If I might, at the risk of again...
You're going to say we can't edit content.
At the risk, e- exactly. The, the, we can, we can concern ourselves with the, um, the size of the sign, the duration that the sign is going to be up, the purpose of the sign, and, and even then, it's sort of blurred, um, coming close to the line. But the actual content of the sign, we cannot regulate. We can suggest, you know, that in, in, in keeping with the, uh, the, the beauty of the city, that it perhaps be a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, but that's not a basis for denying the sign.
Jaha?
I mean, one thing on a practical level, he's building these and selling these, I mean, he's, he's feeling a need we have, and these signs won't be up too long because they'll be sold. So, I mean, I think this is not a problem. I, I think that he's meeting a need that our city needs right now.
Lynn, you were going to make a comment? Um, he's asking for thirty-two square feet. Is this going to be, what, what dimension is that?
Four by eight.
And what is the sign's size for the other ones on Taylor?
They, um, they were six by four. They were twenty-four square feet.
No, I measured them, but they're six by five. They're bigger than that.
What they proposed, what they gave us.
And there's two of them right, you know, from here to that wall, away from each other. And they, you know, I'm not asking for anything that he's doing, I'm asking for a simple sign there until we get done with the project. And it's not a distractor to me. You have your own idea of what's kind of a sign I should put up there, maybe you would give me some idea of designing it for me.
Well, I mean, from a marketing standpoint, which is my background, I, I just see that as being very busy. So, I mean, that would be up to you to decide, obviously, we, we can't tell you what to do with that, but, um, anyway...
One other thing, I was here, sat here all day, what I'm doing is going to cost the city one dime. I'm going to pay for it. Everything I've learned here today with...
I understand that, and we totally understand that. Gary?
Okay, uh, first of all, uh, it was pointed out to me that there is one grammatical error that we would suggest you change. Instead of a quote, it should be just an apostrophe duplex.
It should be an E.
Yeah, or an E, yeah, E, yeah.
It's just a plural word.
It's, it's a very minor. Anyway, um, I think that it's really not our responsibility to do the marketing for somebody that's, or, or to do engineering or whatever. I think that it is our responsibility to make sure that there's some consistency in signage, uh, size, et cetera, and it's really up to this gentleman to, you know, what he wants to put into the sign.
This looks like it's more than that, because this is why, the why, the sign is the size of the outline of the, you know, of the picture here. It's not as big as it looks up here.
Well, we, we, as David advises, um, all we can approve is the sign, but we can suggest, um, that you may make it graphically more pleasing, that's your choice, um, to put some kind of rendering on there or whatever, that's certainly your choice. Residents have commented to me that they think it would be enhanced the ability, so I'll communicate that and pass along what residents have commented to me. But as far as the size of the sign, um, uh, what's your...
I mean, I'm, I'm moved for approval.
I second.
So there's been a motion and a second to approve the Executive Homes Construction Sign Request for the Carmelina duplexes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Go forth and do good things.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Stay up there.
Okay. Recommendation from city officers, city manager.
Our finance director informed me that yesterday we received another installment of three-point-six million for our FEMA reimbursement. That brings our total now to thirteen-point-one million.
Yes.
Ching, all right.
That's it.
Awesome. City attorney?
Yes. We have received two separate, um, settlement proposals and ongoing litigation, and I have an obligation to bring them both, um, before you, for your consideration. The first is one that you previously had seen in the Lecco matter regarding, um, the canal maintenance district assessments for PGI, VSI. This is the same proposal that was presented and then withdrawn. He's asked us, he's asked me to present it to you again for your consideration. There are four options, really, for, at the moment, there's to either accept the proposal as been submitted, to reject the, the proposal, to counter with a, a counter offer, or to, if you want to actually discuss this, um, uh, in more detail, where you can ask me questions regarding, um, strategy, et cetera, then if that's your desire, I would then, at that point, request, um, a shade meeting. But, um, as I said, you, you have the authority at this point to accept, reject, counter, or, um, ask me to ask for a shade meeting.
I personally feel that our canal system is a canal system. And, um, when we are out there operating our vessels, we affect seawalls all over the canal system. So, and the seawalls are not owned by the, the resident, and it's, it's like the roadway. So I, I don't see any reason why we should be...
Let, let me help, let me help, as part of the discussion. At this, at this stage of the litigation, which is much further along than when this was originally presented in January, um, I would not be asking you to give favorable consideration to the settlement. But as I said, if you, if you want to talk about it more with respect to the details of the case, and then give me your opinions as to the strength or weakness of the case ba, based on those conversations, then we should do it at a shade meeting. If you feel like that there's nothing real, nothing here that, um, that gives you any desire to, to settle the case based on the, based on what's been presented, then the suggestion would be simply reject the, the proposal.
Gary?
We have two pieces of litigation in front of us. We're talking about the first one. Is there anything that prevents us from talking about both of them in the same shade meeting? Or have, have two back-to-back shade meetings on the same afternoon?
No, we could have two back-to-back shade meetings, yes, that's correct.
Okay, could we talk about the other one first?
Well...
Well, let's talk about the one at hand. David, how much of this can we talk about right now? I mean, since this is pending litigation, can we discuss what we think about this?
If you, if you want to ask me whether I feel like that there's a, a strong enough weakness in our case that we should give favorable consideration to settlement, um, I will tell you that I don't see a need for settlement. But it's your prerogative to ask me any question that you have regarding the strategy of the case, and I won't, I can never tell you that there's no chance that we're going to lose the case, because there's always a chance we can lose the case. At, under these terms, I, I don't see any reason for you to accept this.
We have had other citizens in the past bring this subject up. Has it ever gotten to this point where someone was suing the city over this assessment methodology?
Not, not during my tenure.
Okay. I don't see any reason to settle, personally. I'm with you. I, I would agree.
So as a consensus, I will, I will convey to Mr. Vacco that you have considered and rejected his settlement proposal.
And also, I think, I think the whole demeanor that was expressed the last time the gentleman was here, I think that speaks volumes for where we are with this. I think we should just go ahead and have, have our day.
That's, that's, that's fine, that you've answered really what, what I needed to, to have you do today. The next, um, late yesterday afternoon, Mr. Plattner, um, appeared at my office and, um, delivered to, uh, one of our, one of our secretaries, um, this letter together with a check. Uh, and, and it's, it's, it's essentially a no strings attached settlement offer of fifty thousand dollars to settle the outstanding, uh, liens that are, are on his, um, on his property. Uh, we are in, uh, in the process of foreclosure, uh, on those, uh, on those liens. I don't think that there's anything left to be done except go to court and, um, and get the court to make a judgment of foreclosure. The, your options here are also the three, the four that I mentioned before, accept, reject, counter, or request a shade meeting.
What is the amount of the, um, liens at this time?
Um, I believe...
Hundred and twenty.
Well, it was a hundred and...
Yeah, I, I, they're in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty, maybe, thousand.
Gary?
I'm going to make one comment and then one question to, to David. We have not been treated respectfully from him, by him, however, we have to keep that out of our decision-making process. With that said, have we determined what other liens and where our position is in the liens of that property at this point?
Yeah, no, we have, and we feel that our case is, um, um, at least based on what we understand of what's, what's in the record.
My point is, I don't want us to spend a hundred thousand dollars to get a hundred and twenty if, you know, I, we want to do what's the best business sense at this point.
Well, and I, and I think...
We may need to do that in a shade meeting, I don't know.
Well, and I think that that's... Part of what you should consider too, is if we're successful in the litigation and you end up with the property, do you want to be in the business of, of owning and then trying to sell property?
Understood.
So, um, in the past, in, in the past, Mr. Plattner's offers have been, um, minimal in terms of the amount, and great with respect to the strings that were attached. So he at least has gotten the message that he should offer more money and take away those strings. He claims that he's ready to go, go to work. I wouldn't put a whole lot of stock in any of that. And there will be more, there will be more, probably not greatly more, in the way of the attorney's fees to, to reach the conclusion of a final judgment. But then there's always the opportunity that he could take an appeal, uh, of that judgment that would again generate legal fees. Personally, I mean, I've lived through, through this even more than you have, because I was involved in all of the code enforcement cases. If you take the emotional stuff out of the equation, and, and re, and taking into consideration that, um, as far as I know, um, he's been, he's maintained compliance with all of our codes since his, his attention has been, has, has been, uh, gotten. The scope, the, the purpose of code enforcement is not to pen, is not to penalize, it's to get compliance, and we have gotten compliance. The amount of money on the table is a, I think, a fair amount of money, and, and, and recognize, and I, I kind of will leave it at that, because I don't want to say anything that would then give him grounds for appeal. But the statute does have certain criteria to take into consideration with respect to the amount of the ultimate fine. And the, and the amount of the ultimate fine at the end of the day needs to be more or less commensurate with what the, the violation was. Now, if you wish to counter with a, a, a higher amount that you think is more reasonable under the circumstances, this would be an opportunity to do so. I'm not sure how much would additionally be gained by a shade meeting. So, but if you wish to have a shade meeting, I'd be happy to do what I'm required to do under the statute, and then is, that is to request a shade meeting.
I personally would like to, I think there's some things we can discuss about our pluses and minuses.
That's fine.
I, I think the shade meeting would also allow us to be educated in a non-compromising way to the situation.
Right, and I, and, and that's, that, that's why I'm here and asking. So at the shade meeting, um, I would also invite, uh, my partner, Anthony Manganello, who's actually the litigation counsel that's handling the foreclosure, and any specific questions you have regarding the, the strength or weaknesses of our case and remaining procedures, um, I, I would invite, I think he'd be available for those. So, um, I will let Mr. Plattner know that, uh, we're going to have a shade meeting. Would you like to schedule it for, um, following the...
So far, there's only two of us that've asked for it.
Well, I'm...
Are we in agreement?
I'm sorry.
No, absolutely not.
You don't want a shade meeting?
I, no, I'm, I'm done with this man. I'm sure, I've been on, I was on code enforcement when this happened.
I understand. But, but my point is, is that's why we have, I would prefer to have this discussion in a shade meeting, so we can get the emotion out of it. Because if it was up to me, I'd be sitting there right there with, I said, but I think we have to look at this more from a business standpoint.
Did you read this document?
Yeah, I read it.
I mean, he, he's bragging about how he beat the system in other locations.
I understand. I just don't want to shoot us in the foot if we don't need to. Or do, or if we want to...
It's the principle of it.
It's the principle of it.
That's why I think we need a shade meeting. Personally.
I, I think there's no downside to having a shade meeting. It gives, it gives everybody the opportunity to be on the same page as, as it relates to what the status of the case is, to be able to share comments that perhaps wouldn't be appropriate at this moment. And so, the city coun, the city attorney does have the authority to request that we have a shade meeting, and, and all you need to do is, is vote to accept the city attorney's request.
May I make a motion that we accept the attorney's request for a shade meeting?
I second.
There's been a motion and a second to accept the city attorney's request for a shade meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. While, while I, if I can just make a comment, while I understand Vice Mayor Matthews' comments and actually feel the same way.
I can certainly understand why.
I feel like I will, I will go along with, at least have a discussion.
Yeah. So, can we have the shade meeting immediately following the next city council meeting? Karen, is, is that, do we have any reason why that can't be scheduled then?
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. City clerk?
Let me just find out if the annex conference room. See what McHale says about the availability of the conference room. Okay, under boards and committees then, starting with vacancies, we have, we have a three-year term as an alternate on the planning commission, an unexpired term on the police officer's pension board, and an unexpired term on the historic preservation advisory board. Under nominations, we have a three-year term as an alternate on the planning commission. We do have one eligible applicant. If you would like to nominate and appoint, I need a motion.
I'll nominate and appoint.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do I need to ask for a vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, under nominations, we have two four-year terms on the Punta Gorda housing authority. We have four eligible applicants for nomination. That does not require a motion. I just need someone to do the nomination.
Nominate all.
Thank you. And lastly, under nominations, we have an unexpired term as an alternate on code enforcement. We do have one eligible applicant. So, if you'd like to nominate and appoint, I do need a motion.
Okay. Debbie nominated and appointed. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a nomination and a second. All favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and McHale has responded that, that conference room is available for the shade meeting.
Okay.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay. Under policy and legislation, legislative session is going to be wrapping up. It's, it's a quickly moving target, and so, is Jerry Paul going to be coming to our next meeting?
Tentatively May 15th.
Okay, that would be great to get an update. The block party was a rousing success, and thank you, counsel, Vice Mayor Matthews, for your help in participating with the block party committee.
Yeah, I didn't do much this year. They, they have their own thing going on.
They do, but they seem to be like maturing with it and, and really enhancing the whole thing.
That's fine.
Yeah, so it really is going well.
It's much more family-oriented than it was before, and I think that's been appreciated.
And the old timers had a great luncheon that Howard and Jahah and I were attended. And then this coming weekend with the hibiscus festival. And I'm going to be, I guess it's presenting the proclamation or something on, to begin the meeting, to begin the hibiscus festival on Saturday morning.
That proclamation is in your inbox.
Okay, so, so we'll start that off, and that's all I have. So, council member comments. Jahah?
Debbie? I, I did attend the airport authority board meeting last Thursday, and I think that it's really exciting, the amount of interest that's being generated in our Punta Gorda airport, and it looks like there are two really firm, economically-footed, if that's an expression, businesses that are coming. And I think we should be watching for really great things coming there. It's, it's a really exciting time for the airport.
Excellent, yes, and I attended Congressman Stube's, the, it's the art. Congressional art exhibit, the art awards, and I attended that. And that was kind of interesting with all, all the schools that participate and the way that they did that project. Congressman Stube did not pick. All of their artists picked the winners, so it was, that was.
Politically sound.
Yes.
Just like to remind everybody that tomorrow is National Prayer Day. And also, at 6:00 PM at the Sacred Heart Catholic Church, there will be a, a multi-interdenominational service in memory of Yom HaShoah, which is in memory of the 16 million people that were slaughtered during World War II. And that'll occur at 6:00 PM, and it'll have a number of people also attending.
Thanks for reminding us about National Day of Prayer, but that'll be tomorrow in front of.
Annex.
The annex at noon.
Otherwise, I plan to behave.
Before you open up public comment, I wanted to make sure that the city council understood that Mr. Plattner's settlement offer was unsolicited. It was not the result of any negotiation or suggestion by the city attorney to Mr. Plattner. I'm not authorized to engage in negotiations with him at this time, so we are not, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, then, we'll, citizen, well, here's citizens' comments on any item. You have three minutes. Please come to the podium. What an eager to have that.
I'm getting hungry, Nancy.
Okay.
Don Sabatini for the record. I just want to thank the council and Howard's staff for the great dialogue and discussion regarding the seawall issue. I think it was budget item C. I think there was a lot of clarity shed on, on that discussion, so thanks for that. And then, secondly, on the Mr. Plattner situation, I think it behooves the city to ensure that they've looked at every minute and every hour by staff time that's been spent on this whole process from the, from the time it started violations of all the codes to date, and that that money is recouped in some format. I don't know how much that is. I don't know how long it would take to figure that out. But taking the emotion out, this is a business decision. This person has caused the city and the taxpayers a lot of money and time. They could have been working other more productive things. Don't let them walk away without paying for that. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good afternoon. Gary Skillicorn. I've not been shy about standing up here in the past and sometimes critical, but this is not the day to be critical. The talk about the seawall and the activities, I think it's time to present the accolades to the city, the city staff, the departments that have made a success of the seawall replacement program. I was skeptical. Now, we're not there yet, and I hope I don't jinx things by stepping up to it. But I think it's time to look at a celebration in the future to say that it's been successful, a remarkable feat that's been done by the city. Thank you.
You're welcome. I would agree to consider that they've created 11 miles of seawall, or will have, in a year and a half. That's the equivalent of building a seawall from the Home Depot at Burt's Store up to Lowe's in Murdoch. That's a feat, and it's unbelievable the amount of organization and documentation that has had to take place and the cooperation of all of the, the contractors that we had to hire. Everyone is partnered together. It's, it's absolutely been amazing. And that FEMA has been there with us all along, and now we have over $13 million in the bank.
13.1.
$13.1 million in the bank. That's pretty awesome, and we're expecting to get to.
Oh, we got more coming.
We do, yeah. So.
I would just like to add to that so that we don't forget when Irma hit. We were also the first community to have our, our vegetation removed, thanks to the great negotiations of our staff and Howard. And we praised our contract, forgot his name already, but he came to.
Howard de Holler.
Howard de Holler, exactly, and.
Do those contracts again? Do we have to do, have contracts in place for this year?
We do, we have.
Yeah, we do, but I'm just saying this is that Howard de Holler gave us, in as best he could, some special privileges. If you weren't, if you lived in the county like some of us might, I don't, you waited a much longer time to, to get your, your streets cleared up, so.
And we got reimbursed already.
And we got reimbursed already, exactly. So, my point being is, everything about the way this community behaved and responded, and staff responded to Irma is all to be celebrated. I think Gary's point is very well, but it's even more holistic than that. It's just.
It is.
That's one reason why we live in this little paradise.
It goes all the way from finance. Everyone that had touched it, it was an amazing group effort, team effort.
With 1.4 people.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
Hi, Kelly Gaylord from the Punta Gorda Starting Year Old Society. I just want to thank the council for your continued support and also your feedback on the fence design, and I just wanted to give you a quick update on the mural. It's been a long process, a lot of delays with weather and crazy things going on. The overall feedback on the mural from all the folks walking and biking on the Harbor Walk has been absolutely amazing, over the top. Folks have commented to us and the artists about the amazing transformation of that wall and how the mural really adds to the beauty and the character of our town. And we strive for that wow factor, and we're getting it, so we're very excited about that. We appreciate council's continued support for all the work that we do. The artist is making very good progress, hopes to be completed by the beginning of June, and we have set the dedication date for June 20th. So, hopefully, you can all attend. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, come on.
Pat Niles, Gateway Point. This isn't quite as intriguing as you dealing with lawsuits, but it is getting back just a little to the focus of the Dover Coal presentation and the master plan and form-based codes and what will be coming up in August. That we'll all be involved with that.